Southwest Florida, welcome back to Lee Pitts Live here at the Southwest Florida Black Expo. And it has turned out to be a huge success. We're in our third day of the expo. And all these people walking around here, you wondering who they are? Well, we're at the Edison Mall, the largest mall in Lee County. And it's the oldest mall in the region. The black vendors are lined up throughout this mall, about 100 vendors for the first annual Black Expo. Lee Pitts Live is the media sponsor of this event. And of course, I've been here every day, all day, paying homage to something that is important, which is our black experience here in Southwest Florida. You will not see any other television show or media come out and cover our people to the degree that I will cover from end to end. I value our people. We have some of the most important people in our community and some who are not so important, who are sitting in that chair throughout this weekend. And certainly, we have a history maker here today, which is one and only Gwen Gittens, the first African-American person ever in over 100 years to be elected to the Lee County School Board. So without further ado, we pay homage to the honorable. Hey, why don't they call y'all?
Just Gwen.
Hey, Gwen, why don't they call y'all honorable, though?
I don't know. And I don't know if on, um, on paper or something that they do, but I'm just Gwen.
Yeah, I know you're just Gwen.
I'm just Gwen.
Gwen, first of all, the TV audience and people who are looking at you now, if they tune into social media, they pretty much can see you like once a week giving updates. You didn't, like, you started off gangbusters with that, but you didn't stop. You just kept being consistently talking to the people. Is that something that's near and dear to you to always be talking to the people?
Most definitely. I feel like the people are who put me here. And if I don't keep in touch with their needs and their thoughts and their ideas, then I have, you know, shirked my responsibility. When I was asking them to vote for me to be in the position, I asked them what they thought. And I, I feel it would be terrible for me to get in there and say, okay, thank you. I need to know what they're thinking. And just like I said in my speech before, um, we don't have all the answers. No one has all the answers. And there's somebody out here, maybe someone walking around this mall today that has a wonderful education idea that if brought to us and worked together, that it would help our children. And that's what we're all about.
When you come to an event like this, a Black Expo at the Edison Mall, the first one of its kind, and you move around and you know a lot more about things that are going on as it relates to progress for people of skin of color, what, 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 when you are seeing this, particularly here in this mall, just, just kind of tell me what thoughts are going through your head in terms of progress or lack thereof, or just, just a whole Gwen analysis on what you're experiencing here?
Well, thank you for that. When I spoke a little bit ago on the main stage, my goal is to educate people. This position is about education. My job is about education. And it's to educate everyone to understand what we are doing, what we're doing with your children, what we're doing with your tax money, what we're doing in the community. And I know it's a cliche that it takes a village to raise a child, but I have not believed that more than I have sitting on this board. Because if you have just one group raising your child, they're going to see it one way. Another group is going to see it another way. And I, I told them on the board a few weeks ago, I said, my purpose in sitting on this board is to look at the same data that you're looking at, but to see it through these eyes and this experience and this life and explain to you that you see it this way, I see it this way. Where can we meet in the middle that it would be best for children? And so the whole great thing about being out here is just educating people that, um, don't just, you know, say, oh yeah, the school board. Come to meetings or listen to them on YouTube. Sit in a meeting on a Tuesday night, we have a meeting this, um, Tuesday night at 6 o'clock, and just come and join us and sit there and listen. You don't have to speak, but learn what's going on.
Be informed.
Be informed and be involved.
The, back to the Black Expo in particular.
Yes.
How important is this to our community?
Well, when you look at the data as to, I was talking about the students that graduate. And it listed the ones going to four-year college or two-year college and trade school and the military. And then there was 18% that didn't have a choice as to what they were doing. And for some reason, I think there's a lot of the people that are walking around this mall that don't have a table because they haven't realized, I can do this business or I'm good at that. So we've got to help make that connection. I, I love it when I walk around out here.
You love the entrepreneurial spirit, the starting your own business?
And, and doing your own thing. Kids nowadays are like, don't tell me what to do. Okay, then you tell yourself what to do. You figure out your finances, get a table out here, open it up, and start your business, and then I won't tell you. But as long as you got your hand out for me to help you.
Gwen, you said you tell yourself what to do.
Yeah.
And you don't mean, then we don't have a word.
Make your own money, make your own decisions.
Oh, that's funny. Hey, in your background, I, I don't know this to be the case, but it just seemed like to me somewhere along the way in your background that you may have run your own business or you've been involved, know you had some banking background. So you, you have a real good grasp of the concept of being a, a business owner or entrepreneur, right? Go ahead and talk into that camera, just talk about some of your experiences.
One of the businesses that we had was called Celebrate. And it was a business doing corporate events and decorating and weddings and coordinating and all of that. One of the things that I always made sure is the customer really is always first.
Y'all listen to that.
When I was doing, I'll give you an example. I did, um, I did a lot of bar mitzvahs and bat mitzvahs for Jewish children's birthdays. And I would make an appointment to go to their home and see their room and talk to the child and see what they like and what they do. And then I would build on that for their party. If they had a lot of Batman or whatever around and then I was talking to them, then I would kind of do that kind of a thing. But the, the way that you keep customers is to keep them happy. And you can't keep them happy if you don't know what they're thinking.
You are making my job, sitting right here, doing these extemporaneous interviews that I have to do all the time. You are making it easier because of my next question.
Okay.
You talked about the customer is always right. Listen and understand needs and then react to those needs with the customer in mind. Back to the school board. Right.
That is.
As a school board member, if people listen to you, follow you, read what you say, and I do, I always see you go back to your district, back to the customers, back to the students, the parents, the need, the modular units, the lack of physical facilities in this area like in other areas, the shifting of dollars, the lack thereof of dollars in a certain community where the customers are saying, we need this over here, speak.
When I first, and everybody knows, I was in the news last week with the pictures of the portables that really, I literally, when I was taking those pictures, I was in tears. And when I did the report, you will notice, I didn't say this area, I didn't say this school, because I didn't want to. Because the first thing I wanted people to understand, if you are a part of this district, if any part of the district is, is hurting, we all hurt. That we have to look at it that way. And not that, you know, people will say, oh, all you ever talk about is this over here and you talk about these, um. If Sanibel schools or situations were like that, I would be just as vocal about Sanibel, the Cape or wherever. It just so happens that the need is in one area, it has been in one area, it continues to be in one area, and I am the voice for the voiceless to speak up for them.
Who is the customer in this scenario?
The children.
Okay.
Our children. When we look at that graduation rate, our report card is, how well did we educate that child? How well did we prepare them? Did that child feel comfortable and feel good about walking into that classroom? Were they proud of walking into that classroom? Were they being given the best education? Our teachers and staff are wonderful and they work really, really hard. But if you're a teacher and you walk into one of those buildings, how, how does that make you feel like we really care about you? And we want you to have a good experience as well? So it's not about one area, one school. It's about the fact that we all have to look at, we are one school district. And we need to prioritize.
And one of the things when we hear you questioning things that are going on, making recommendations, seems to always rise to the surface is this whole thing about, um... That the perception that you, that people are saying, stay in your place, shut up, go with the flow, and you just refuse to do that. Unpack that for me. Make, tell me some, the reality in your own words, how that concept keep rising to the surface, and is it real?
Oh, it's definitely real. From, I was put on, I, I got on the board in November of 2018. And if you go back and look at any of the meetings in January and February, oh, I was attacked brutally to stay in my lane and stop asking questions. And I said to someone this morning, I'm such an inquisitive person that if I say to you, wait, what, what's that over there? And you go, don't ask any questions. I want to know even more than ever. Why are you not answering my question? What is the deal?
Mm-hmm.
And what, what my, it's my job to unpack it all and let the customers know, this is what we're doing. And I am not a fighter, but I am, I fight for truth and for honesty. And all I want is for people to just listen to what I'm saying. You may learn something. You may see this number totally different. When they kept saying to me, well, we only have 3% of portables in our whole district. We're the fourth lowest for the amount of portables in the whole state. But I wasn't okay with that. And I went back and crunched those numbers, and you know what I found? We're only 3%. 80% of that 3% is right here.
Right.
And they were furious with me, but I said, I'm using data you gave me. I'm not making this up. I'll go on an overhead projector and show you how I came up this and this and this, and this is how I got it.
So ideally, you would like to see what happened?
I want to see the merry-go-round to stop. For everybody to just step down, get around the table, take the puzzle all apart and put it back together and say, do we really need this piece of the puzzle? No, get rid of that. Do we need this piece? Yes, but it needs to be there. Move it over. And it's all about communication. And it's all about caring for the whole group, not just certain areas.
Why is it that, I'm not saying this, I'm just suggest, you can speak to it, but the merry-go-round, which you so eloquently described, I think there's seven of you on the board.
Seven.
All of you are learning people. It appears, I could be wrong. In this merry-go-round and unpacking it and re-putting the puzzle back together, you seem to be the only one who's identifying that as a problem. Why isn't that there's more, there are more people screaming from the rooftop like you?
And I really don't know. I have asked them. And I've had board members say to me, you know, you keep asking these same questions. What, what is it that you want? And equity. Okay, I want you to stop. I want you to listen to me. I want you to stop telling me to shut up and realize. When I taught school and I taught about communication, you know the Venn diagram where the two circles join? This is the way I see it, this is the way you see it. When you cross them over, that little piece in the middle is where the truth is. But unless you listen to me and I listen to you, we never get there. You can't close your ears and go la 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 and expect us to come to a conclusion. You can't say over and over, we need to get together and people need to stop complaining. I tell them, only God and the governor can get me out of here before November of '22.
I would think that your feedback, even though you represent the entire school district, you still have a, you have to have a laser focus on the people who elect you in your district. I would think because of your outgoing championing the cause in your district, where those, that large percentage of that 3% is located, I think 80% of the 3% of the modulas, I would think that those people really support what you're doing and they are, they're, they're so thrilled to have somebody in there fighting for their, for their cause.
And let me speak to that. Thank you for bringing that up. Because I want to look at them and say, I'm fighting for you and for our children. And I want you to know that you do have a voice. When we have town halls, when I'm on every Thursday from 7 to 8 on Facebook.
On Facebook and YouTube?
On Facebook and YouTube. Come on, ask me a question. If I can't answer you, I'll let you know that. But right now, I am the biggest and loudest voice for all that we need. But I need other voices. We have developed the Eastly Education Co-op. And it is a group of community members and parents. And the superintendent and some of the district staff also sit in. And it's a start, but we need people to help us move that along. We need people to understand they have a voice, they can take pride in what they do, and they can give ideas and thoughts.
You said, come on and ask me questions.
Please.
I'm going to allow you to tell me the two top questions that you would love to be asked and what your response to those two are. Go.
The first one is what I hear all the time. Why did you go to the media? Why did you go to the governor? People stop me and, and ask me that question. And the reality is, I went to my board and I went to the superintendent and I said, we need to sit down and have a conversation. And we have two choices, that either we're going to sit down and discuss this or I'm going to go public with it because something must be done.
Okay.
I begged them on more than one occasion.
Second question.
Okay. Um, how can I help?
Okay.
Okay, um, I want people to ask me how you can help. Right now, we do have, we've made contact with the governor and the governor's office. And I can give you an email to write up there and say, yes, we need to have this looked at. Yes, we need to. And, and along with that, stay involved. Watch the meetings, come to the meetings. Sit there in a meeting and just pray for me if nothing else. If you don't want to get up and talk, just sit there, make eye, eye contact and let me know that you're with me. But whether you are or not, I'm not going to give up the fight.
Will you be running for reelection?
I am thinking about it, and I know you want an exclusive, so we'll talk about that. Right now, we've got so many fires burning.
You're on Lee Pitts Live, right now.
And I can be on Lee Pitts Live again.
Who, nowhere else you gonna break some news. Come on, Gwen. Come on, Gwen.
Lee, do you know how many reporters have run me down and said the same thing?
Yeah, but, yeah, but.
Yeah, but.
All right.
Let me tell you, I am very strategic.
I know that.
Okay, and strategically, when I am ready and when it's time, we'll, we'll let you know.
All right, now, so I'll take that as a yes. Let's go to, let's go to, before I let you go. I don't know if you, I know, I don't know if you get tired of talking about it or it's something that you just have to continue to make sure that people understand. You never bring it up, but it's obvious that your skin color is the same color of my skin. And I know what goes along with that process, especially when you're breaking barriers and certainly in a red district. I know you have to appeal to a wide range of people, but a lot of the things that you are enunciating that may be causing you challenges, do you think you would have those same challenges if you were not black?
I have been asked, I think that's one of the one questions I get asked a lot, is it about race? In my mind, it's about children. And if I need to get your attention, you don't look like me. I'm not going to get your attention if I stand up and, and say, oh, you know, I'm being treated because... No, I want the focus on children. It's not a focus on me. I know I'm the first. And as Michelle Obama said, being the first, you don't even have the option to fail. So when I get tired or down about all of this, I know that all of these children and their families are counting on me to not fail. And so I have to keep going. And it's not about one thing, it's about the big picture.
Kamala Harris, Vice President, United States of America, your thoughts when she, when, when, when the Biden ticket won? Your thoughts about Kamala and what that means to America?
I wanted to buy me some Doc Martens so I could wear them.
You are local Kamala.
One thing that she said that really stuck with me was, she may be the first, but she won't be the last. And I am looking in the camera and saying, elections are coming up in '22. Look around, see who is running, see what spots and see what they've done in the last four years. And if you don't think they have represented you or have done some of the things or have contacted you, then get out there.
Hey, Tisha, trying to hide. Hey, Tisha, trying to hide on TV.
Oh, man.
Go ahead.
It was...
From Tisha and Toya. Come on, Tisha, come on, Gwen's not there yet, come on. She's trying to hide and pick her purse up, she don't want me to see her.
Hello, 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 I'm so sorry, I was trying to hide, but he always puts us on the spot. But you have to love Lee Pitts.
This is Tisha, from Tisha and Toya, one of the great TV talk show hosts. Hey, you know who I'm talking to right now, right?
Yes, I do. Our first. Our first to break the glass ceiling with the Lee County School District.
Thank you.
Gwen Dillon, it's right here.
She is paving the way for all of our little girls who are looking at her and coming up behind her. So thank you.
Thank you.
Gwen, you okay with us having some fun?
Oh, no, I like fun.
Because you so serious, seeing like... Hey, Gwen, do people think, right, right, right. She, um, whoa, did I cut you?
No, we were talking about Kamala Harris.
Kamala Harris, go ahead, do you?
And basically, it was just like she said with the little girls. I have a group of four little girls that I read with, uh, you know, once a week when I'm not way too busy. But we've got to have a future. And here's the other thing, I have begged people since day one to come along beside me. I will take you where I go, I will teach you what I know, and I will groom you. Because I want to do this forever. Okay?
What's your thoughts about the principal, uh, new principal at Gateway High, Nikita? Seem like, uh, when I see her and I see what's going on out there in your district, I, I kind of, I see you in somewhere, you're lurking.
You know me.
She's African-American.
You know me too well. Yes, I will say, I worked hard, I worked hard to promote, and I still do, to promote qualified, ready...
That's the key word, key word, qualified, ready.
And ready and seasoned administrators in this district. I mean, I know, I worked in the district for 12 years. I know the roadblocks and all of that. So that's one of the things that I have tried to help break down some of those roadblocks because we got to kick the wall down. We are majority minority.
A little higher.
60% minority. We got to show that when people walk into some of our schools that are 80%, you know, minority. And not that we can't have someone that doesn't look like you as an administrator, but just like she was saying, kids look up and say, wow, I can do that, too. We've got to give them something to start looking for.
And when will your, your campaign officially launch? When people can start? People can start getting their t-shirt, you know, you know, get organized or getting the ground game going by the time the pandemic will be gone? I can't trick you?
No, you can't. No, you can't.
Bump me, Gwen.
There are no t-shirt orders or cups yet.
Hey, 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 Gwen, you saw it coming from a mile away.
I know you, man, I know you, man. You know, you did say we're the same color.
You gonna still use those same colors, like yellow and green? And that bus, remember that bus?
Thank you so much for this time and this interview. And, uh, see, you got to stay so much ahead of you, though.
Well, it's been a pleasure having Gwen Gittens to stop by. Uh, Gwen, before you go, I do need to get, uh, uh, one more question in.
Okay.
What did, you spoke earlier today. Uh, what was the, the essence of your presentation here at the Black Expo?
The essence of it was, I used our impact study. Every year, the district does what's called an impact study for that school year. And it talks about all of the things that, uh, personal, passionate and progressive that we did during that year. So I kind of broke some of that down. And then I asked questions because I wanted people to look at it. And I said, okay, how many students did we educate last year? Was it 70 or 95? And then people would look at it. And, um, in our budget, where does the majority of our budget come from? And it's from local, especially property tax. So when you get your TRIM notice, look on there and see education and know that you're helping us to put this puzzle together.
I never look at that itemization, so it'll say the word education?
It should say education.
Okay, I'm gonna start looking at that.
Take a look at it. I just came back from a, um, a training up at Howie in the Hills on finance. And they were showing all the things with the TRIM notices.
I will look at it the next time, I just take it and just, you know?
No, take a look and say, yes, I'm educating a child.
Right, right, right. Boy, I tell you. Well, Gwen, every time I talk to you, it's a wealth of knowledge.
I'm a teacher, what can I say?
I'm always better off when I lead the conversation.
Thank you.
And, uh, I need an advance notice when we're going to be breaking some news.
I will let you know.
And when I see you break the, well, break the news however you want to, because I don't really, I'm not a news breaking, that's not my thing. I'm a talk show, unedited, where you come and probably the only place you can come and do what you do. And whenever you get around to doing what you do, I'll just, uh, do what we do.
If I ever order another t-shirt, you'll get one.
But stay with the, stay with that color that you used last time, so it can be consistent. You already got name recognition now, you don't have to fight that battle. You're an incumbent. People know that you afford the children. You are probably the most popular board member. You are the, uh, you're the most popular board member, uh, for many reasons, but obvious reasons, uh, makes you extremely popular. And, uh, you know, when, uh...
I, I, I will.
You'll be ready.
I will, I will.
I would take that as a yes.
The next cup that we bump may be mine and yours.
All right, all right, but you got to get, get going now, don't wait till the last minute.
Okay.
That way you scare people off, they want to have an opponent.
You know what, you want to be my political, you know?
I will, uh, I have to kind of, I do my stuff.
Okay.
Hey.
All right.
I do my stuff, you know how I do my stuff.
I know how you do your stuff, we'll talk.
Right, that's right. And, uh, because I'm independent.
Right.
But I still stay down the middle to a certain degree. But there's certain time when I'll go where I need to go.
And I want you to...
That's right.
If I choose to run again, I want you to talk to me and whoever decides to run again.
Oh, well, I'll, I don't even need permission. I'm, I'm the boss.
Oh, no, 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 no.
But I know what you're saying. But, so let's, let's wrap this up, Gwyn. Close us out with a quote or something that always inspires you. Somebody says something. You go, I know you got all of that stuff. So leave us with, looking at camera, lead us with a good motivational saying or that you read that always inspires you.
It's actually on the front of my Facebook page. And it's a quote by John Lewis, that if you see something wrong, you have a responsibility to do something about it. If not, you have lost your voice, you have lost who you are. So when I see something or hear something, I'm not going to stop until I do something about it. And we need all of you to participate. Go visit your schools, visit your teachers, know what's going on at the school that your children go to and volunteer if you don't have children. Thank you so much, Lee.
This has been Gwyn Gittens, Lee County School Board Member, a candidate possibly for the 2022 elections. Stay tuned to Lee Pitts Live. We're here at the Black Expo where you get all the news. Gwyn, you don't know this, but people have been seeing me doing these interviews for the last three days. All of my interviews have been about eight minutes or less.
How did I get so?
I gave you all of that time so that you can really get your message out.
But you didn't give it to me. You gave it to the children of the Lee County School District.
All right. It's been a plum-pleasing pleasure and a privilege. We'll be right back. For those who say it can't be done, they're usually interrupted by those like Gwyn Gittens and all of her supporters who are doing it. We'll be right back. Hello, Southwest Florida. Thanks for watching Lee Pitts Live. Of course, I'm Lee Pitts. I hope you enjoy that particular show, but you can always catch us here on YouTube. Just click on the subscribe button down there. That way you can get your Lee Pitts Live on demand when you want it and how you want it. We also encourage you to watch our show on Fox 4 and connect with us on all, all our social media platforms. Just type in Lee Pitts Live.